I'll call them. I'll call the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Okay. Cassandra, did you move to approve?
Sure.
And was it Brian that second? I can't. Okay, Brian's second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing no opposition. The motion to approve the agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is communication and public comment. Just reminder that the state board agenda will place limits on public comment based on the number of members of the public who intend to speak. I'll give each speaker five minutes or three minutes if there are a large number of speakers. At the end of your allotted time, I will ask you to conclude and the board will move on to the next.
Thank you.
The department will not respond to public comment aside from requesting clarification. The department may place a topic raised in public comment on a future agenda. A topic from public comment that is not related to an item on today's agenda will not be addressed at today's meeting. The question is, is how many people do we have for a public comment today?
We have seven individuals in the room. If you are here and would like to make a public comment, just use the raise hand feature for Zoom. And I am seeing none at this time.
All right, to third, there's no public comment and we will move on to the consent agenda. Thomas, do you have any insight for us with the consent agenda?
Um, all of the rules on the consent agenda received no public comment. All of the rules are were started before the start, the effective date of executive order 10. Uh, all three rules packages on the consent agenda are non-controversial.
Okay. Any discussion from board members about the consent agenda?
I move we pre-approve the consent agenda as presented.
It's been moved by Brian and seconded by Rod. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the consent agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is the contract for Horizon Science Academy Des Moines Charter School. We have anybody from the DE who's going to be taking the lead as far as facilitating this discussion?
Um, Mr. President, Thomas Mays, uh, here with Janet Boyd, Cassandra Klein, and Eric Hites also joined at the board table. My representatives from the charter school itself. Because this is a contract, not with the department, but with the state board. We thought to present some of the, uh, some of the questions that we had raised to allow the representatives from the charter school to respond and work through, sort of the sticking points in the contract in real time. Um, and so with that, uh, the frame on this is this, this body has already approved the application. Uh, the contract, um, subject to things that my colleagues would point out, subject to things that you, my question about such as filling in gaps or filling in insert name here. Uh, or language that might be duplicative. Uh, we'll walk through those, but largely this contract, um, meets the purpose of both the application as approved and code section 256, code chapter 256E. So at the end of the day, the department is going to recommend approval of this contract between the board and the charter school. But with that framing, I'm going to turn it over to colleagues to sort of walk through. And at any time, as we walk through this of any member of the board, since this is your contract, not the department's contract. If any member of the board has a question, a clause asking why the clause is required or why a clause is missing. Uh, either somebody from the department or a representative of the, uh, successful charter school applicant will weigh in.
Okay.
So any questions from the board about the procedure? Any questions from charter school representatives?
No.
So I will turn it over to the people who actually work for a living, Cassandra, Janet, and Eric. Uh, to walk through some of the unanswered questions that we're going to answer here today.
Um, I would like you to turn to page 12 regarding the annual performance targets. And I believe it is section 7.22. And I'll give you a minute here to get there. And I'm sorry, Mr. President, this is Eric Hites.
Yes, sir.
What we'll do now is, uh, what we wanted to do is just talk about a few of these annual targets, just to be sure, um, the board understood what those were and, um, our rationale with that. Um, the first one is the student academic proficiency for English language arts. And the contract says it's 48% and 5%. And so we asked, and this is both for English language arts and math. We did ask the charter school, fees were lower than the state average. And so we did ask the charter school, why are you going for these schools? What they did is they provided us with information on the read, how they came up with these, both these goals for, uh, English and math. Are based on their feeder school, uh, specifically the feeder schools in Des Moines, that data. So they're using that as their baseline to determine that this would be an annual target for the, for their first year. With the expectations that they will continue to grow. And based on that information for both English language arts and math, we were comfortable with that with one change. Um, and one bring this up to the board. Uh, so 48% of 5% for English language arts, we're comfortable with based on the feeder data. Um, the second item under that is the student academic proficiency for math is at 43. We're okay with. We had put in originally 5%. Um, they said, based on their, um, data that that should be at 3%. And we are okay with lowering that to 3% because later on in the contract, there was a negotiation. Uh, that took place that raises a number. So in the kind of the spirit of, of contract negotiation. And then also the fact that the data they showed us, we're comfortable with that for, for moving forward. So that would be one change, um, that we would like to see made to the contract would be under math.
All right, with that, with that change, do we need, uh, to discuss that now? Are we going to discuss all the changes individually? Is that what we're intending to do or, or wait and, discuss and vote on the changes? Give me a little direction here.
So I think it's really up to the, uh, the two contract parties. If there's something that is really like, if a member of the state board wants to dive into the, a particular change. Great. We don't vote on particular changes as we go. We, uh, the board would adopt or not adopt the contract at the end. So I'm, uh, in the interest of efficiency, there's nothing requiring a discussion if nobody wants to, you know, anybody who wants to discuss any of these contract terms along the way, it's your contract. Please weigh in, but there's nothing requiring that either.
Okay, so go ahead, Rod.
I, I have a question, John, uh, quickly. Uh, so the numbers that we're looking at, are those the Des Moines schools or are they the Des Moines area schools? And by area, I mean, uh, other, uh, districts that are, uh, in the Des Moines area.
These are specifically the Des Moines schools. That they pulled from.
Do you not think you'll pull from the other districts?
We won't pull from, I'm sorry, this is, uh, hi, good morning. I'm Dr. Chris Murphy with Concept Schools, a founding group member, uh, representing, uh, the ESP, uh, as the educational service provider. Um, again, we'll only be pulling students from Des Moines Public Schools. That is the attendance zone that we have identified. So there will be no neighboring school district students allowed within the school. That's per the contract. Uh, and most of these are annual targets are based on some of the target population schools in which we want to pull students from within Des Moines Public Schools. Specifically, schools around the King Irving area, around Cheetah Park, uh, and the near northwest quadrant of, uh, Des Moines Public Schools. That's how these figures were determined. That's where we're going to focus up our primary efforts for enrollment.
Thanks for the explanation.
Any other questions or comments regarding student performance on these indicators?
I have a question. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
So that 48 and 5% and the 43 and then we're lowering math to 3%, is that, um, does that track with those feeder schools? Or is that, um, are we skewing that down to, uh, you know, kind of, split the difference between state average and feeder schools? Or can you explain their relationship there?
Based on the data, um, that we reviewed, that tracks with those feeder schools. And we did follow up with, um, the, um, assessment curriculum person with, uh, with the charter. And we're you, again, we're using this kind of as a baseline with the intent that these will increase in the future.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Just one, one more quick comment about the, uh, these target areas. Again, this, we don't have much of a benchmark to work with. As soon as we have our year one of implementation, we expect to have more concrete baseline figures. We'll be working with the department to clarify those target areas and have a, a better picture. Once we have that, that enrollment into the school, once we get that first round of assessments come fall. And so we, we will be collaborating with the department to make sure that our target areas are reasonable and, and expected of the, the high quality that we want.
Uh, just a quick question for staff. Um, what is the state averages?
Right in front of my nose. Uh, 71% for ELA, 65% for math.
Thank you.
So, sorry, this is Brooke. Um, the contract does say that we can, so for these, can we come back, let's say, and, um, I know that, you know, this is going to be the first year, so maybe after the first or second year, um, to kind of look at these numbers to see where they are. Um, and then can we kind of set a higher bar, I guess, if, if the numbers are, you know, once you guys have had a year or two and you've collected data and you know kind of where the students are actually. Because I know right now it's kind of, you're kind of shooting in the dark there. You don't have a lot to go with. Um, then can we come back and maybe set a higher?
Yes, we, we welcome that. Yes, please, please do. We want to have a higher bar.
And the statute, the statute requires setting annual performance, annual performance targets. So this is, will be not necessarily coming back to the board, but an annual, uh, iteration of growth and hopefully growth and setting a higher target.
Okay, thank you.
I'm assuming that Janet or somebody else from the department will be giving us report after year one as far as how things have been going.
Yes, there, there are reporting requirements.
Okay, any other comments or questions regarding student performance?
Is this, is this annual or reporting, is that 7.7 of the agreement? Is that the monitoring? Or am I looking at? Or is that something else?
No, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just one last question. Is it helpful to capture in here what the assumptions are based on? So when we come back to revisit this, knowing that a year is going to pass, uh, what these original numbers were based on? So just to remember that it's based on just pulling from Des Moines schools and how the averages were calculated?
Um, Ms. Halls, as a point of order, that can be reflected in the minutes. I don't necessarily know if it belongs in a contract. So the minutes will reflect that that's what the assumption is. Is that satisfactory to you?
Okay. Anything else before we move on?
Yes, Mr. President, we have one other, uh, change to the annual progress reports or the annual, uh, performance targets on page 15. And it's goal one on page 15.
Okay.
And what we've, uh, in discussion with the charter, originally goal one, and then I believe it states it in the contract is by the end of the year, reporting 50% of students will perform at or above benchmark. Um, we've asked, and actually they came back with, we would like to see that increase to 60%. Eric, where's that?
I'm fine with that.
Page 15, oh, yeah. I, I printed them a copy that I had in Google Docs, so it may not, it may not be exactly the same. I just wanted a chance to have a.
Sorry, Ramon, you can fix this.
Yeah, this, this is the Word version of the PDF. 16, I think.
16?
I think so. Sorry about that.
No, I don't apologize.
Yep.
PDF, Word, Google Doc.
Yeah, and you had this discussion with, uh, our, our representatives about this already?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm fine with the, uh, increasing the, or raising the bar was, what's the rationale behind that, if you would?
That's more in line with the, uh, the average, state average, bringing that up.
Okay.
And we don't, our internal goal is we'd like to see that eventually statewide at 80%.
All right. Any comments or questions from the board members? Hearing none, let's move to the next item we have for us to review.
That's all we have for target assessment, so I'll turn it back over to them.
All right, there's some other, uh, portions of the contract that are, uh, fiscal or administrative. And so we'll walk, um, if Dr. Klein would like to point out her, um, concerns or her questions and allow the board to address.
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, I, these are, most of these are, uh, just language type of things. Um, just not sure if it's something we would want to address or not, so just thought I would bring them up. Uh, so under parties on the first sentence, um,
Where are we?
Which page is that?
Uh, the very first paragraph of the first page.
Okay.
In the last sentence, it's reference to boundaries of the Iowa state. And I just thought, um, inconsistent with other things that I read, it generally says state of Iowa. Um, so thought I would make that small suggestion.
It reads, your suggestion reads fine with me.
Also, under the parties, uh, the use of name for governing board. Uh, throughout the first part of the document, the use of the name includes brackets similar to some of the other unedited placeholders. Um, so really this is just a verification that that was used correctly. Because none of the other short names retained the use of the brackets themselves.
So like, what are you suggesting?
Um, I think instead of it saying name, actually saying governing board or applicant. Um, I think the name is more of a placeholder because it retained its brackets. So I think just clarifying the party that's being reflected. Um, just needs to be clarified. There's a couple of spots.
I'm wondering if this is a version issue as well, because I'm looking at the PDF that's on the, the board's agenda. And it's spelled out on the bottom of that section. It says November 1st, 2022, Horizon Science Academy. We're in the paper that we have, it's date with bracket, name with bracket.
So there's a missing bracket. The whereas, the next above, and this is from the board's agenda.
I see. So who's the name that we're looking for here?
Yes.
Okay, so fill in the blank.
Yeah.
Oh, we're playing Mad Libs. All right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got you.
Okay, so we're just kind of, we're just kind of cleaning things up a little bit here.
Yeah.
Yes, and then there's, uh, along the exact same lines, under purpose, there's a bracket, name of entity bracket. That also appears again to be a placeholder.
So, um,
Second, whereas you have a, the center of the first page, what, what does that need to read as?
It says name, okay.
Name setting forth in terms.
I, if, if it's okay, in those names, we could just change it to governing board.
Yes.
And the.
So maybe a find and replace.
Well, I don't know. We might need to just take a look to make sure it's not referencing anything else. Look at the first one, this governing board. Do you have, if you do a find and search, do you have both of these?
Well, isn't, isn't it supposed to be Horizon? It's talking about the board, the governing boards, not the entity.
So up in the parties, it says name as referencing the governing board. So maybe that needs to be clarified.
Yeah, it, it, in the, under the parties, toward the middle, Horizon Science Academy, Des Moines Governing Board, hereafter applicant or name. An Iowa nonprofit corporation. It, that's the entity that's going to do the charter school. To me, that should be Horizon or HSA or whatever.
So, so the board is the entity, Horizon Science Academy, Des Moines. That is the, uh, name in which they have incorporated under.
Right, but it. I'm just saying the entity is Horizon, not the governing. The board is not an entity.
So the, the contract is with the founding group and the state board. So whatever the name of the founding group is under the statute.
Contracts with the.
What I'm saying is where in the contract too, is it's referred to as Horizon Science Academy throughout the rest of the contract as well. So.
So with consistency. So for consistency, applicant or Horizon Science Academy or applicant. Contracting with the applicant makes sense.
Applicant is good enough for me, yeah.
But there's two parties. One is the governing board, which is the applicant or name. And then there's the school, which is the school or charter school, um, identified under the parties. And so that's why I think there's just clarity pieces.
Okay.
So what are we going to insert where it says name?
The code states that the contract is between, it says each charter school contract shall be signed by the president of the state board and the president of the appropriate officer of the governing board of the founding group. That's what, that's what you're.
Correct.
Okay, so.
So what are our steps here? What, do we want to go section by section and clarify whose name is who? Because I, I think when we see Horizon Science Academy in here, it might mean two things. It might mean the board or it might be the school, and that might be the source of confusion.
Let's go, let's keep going. And so I think in the first, um, like governing board is, in the parties, applicant would work. In recitals, the first recital. Applicant would work because it's the contract, who's entering into the contract. And the applicant is the founding group who's entering into the contract on behalf to operate the charter school. So that would be my recommendation to sort of move this along because we're on page three of 27.
So we're, and the second war as with the name, what are we subbing in there, Tom?
I would recommend subling in applicant because applicant is already referenced above to, uh, the governing board in the parties.
Okay. Brian and Nathan and others, is that acceptable to you?
Yes.
Yes, so long as it's also reflected, you know, elsewhere as appropriate.
Okay.
Read.
All right, let's move on.
Uh, under the purpose section, so I think that was, uh, page three. Uh, there is a name of entity in brackets, uh, that appears to be a placeholder. Needs to be populated.
In what portion of the purpose?
1.1.
1.1, I do not see any bracketed name.
Okay, so in your version, it, it got changed from the original contract. So, okay. The board's version should be the same as this. Yeah, okay. Uh, section 1.1.1 and 1.1.2 are duplicative, so, uh, just ensuring that was purposeful.
I think we can strike and remember.
Okay. Is there a location identified in your version? Oh, I just didn't get the original contract. That's what my notes are from, from 2.4, so, um, 2.4, do you have a location identified?
Uh, we do not, and I do not believe that they have a contract with their location yet.
Not yet.
So we're not, we're not ready for that.
Well, 2.4 is a little messy anyway. So is the school be established at to be determined.
Or just change this to add a later date?
That should read, the school will be established.
The location of the school.
The school location.
Will be established at a later date.
Procedurally then, is that an amendment to the contract or just an informational item to the state board?
Thank you.
It's informational item.
Yeah, the, the only thing I would point out is 8.3 addresses the same.
Correct.
Same thing, and it says that we'll, we'll know a location acceptable to the state board. By a date certain.
So the location really will be acceptable to the state board is, the criteria for that really will be, is it, is it fit for human occupancy and human habitation? Um, I think the deferential review under that, we could select a date if you have a target date by which you will have a, if the administrators, uh, have a target date by which they will have a lease signed and then occupancy permits obtained.
March 1st.
We're, we're in good faith negotiations and have been for some time in a specific location. Uh, what we have, we're expecting a signed LOI back in our hands within the next day or so. We're potentially having a, a lease agreement in our hand within the next week or so. Clearly, there'll be some discussion on the items within that agreement, so I think March 1st is a, is a fair date if you're comfortable with that.
I am.
That's fine with me as well.
If, and if need be, it can be placed on the March state board agenda if there's concerns. If staff have concerns about the location.
I'm not sure it has to be an agenda item specifically unless there's concerns from the DE, but it could be an informational item.
8.3, the yellowed out portion should, should read by March 1st, 2023. Correct.
Yes.
Just to be clear, are we, are we changing school code at all by specifying a date? Do we have to specify a date or are we just doing that in good faith?
Doing it to keep things on track.
I just spent nine.
Well, if the.
Two.
The Horizon's group feels confident with March 1st, that's fine. I don't have a problem with, with specifying that. The only concern I have is if something falls through, then where are we at?
Well, if something falls through, that's a aside agreement discussion that we could have at the March meeting. But I.
Well, it's in the statute already as well, correct? That if, if things fall through, and to be quite honest, the only thing we foresee falling through logistically would be facility. And, and if something doesn't work out. March 1st, middle of March, there might have to be some discussion. In the statute, we're allowed that additional year, right, Eric? Just to make sure that we go forward. Cassandra, and it's not at all what we want. We really want to make sure that this does happen. We're, we're doing everything we can to get that lease agreement in place. But to your point about potential discussion in the next board meeting. What information do we need to share and with whom do we share it with respect to the, the lease?
Lease occupancy permit, like that it's past safe, that it's past, that it's applicable building authorities have determined that it's suitable for the use to which you're putting it. So fire marshal, building inspector, whoever that is.
So full occupancy permits by March 1st? I don't know that that will be realistic.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, if they just get a lease by then, they, because only because I know that you guys have some work. If we're talking about the previously identified location.
We are.
They actually have some work that they're going to want to do to make it because it's not currently used right now.
Well, but there are some entities that are in the bill, in the space. So I mean, it is being used and they're going to be moving out by March 1st.
It's used, but not by a school.
It is.
Yes.
Lease by March 1st, lease by March 1st.
Lease by March 1st. Okay.
Okay, lease by March 1st. Any other comments regarding this item on the contract?
Out of curiosity, what is the space?
It's Franklin Junior High at 48th and Franklin. And it's been acquired by a, an individual that had plans originally to use it more for an entertainment venue and COVID hit, that changed that dramatically. They do have some current tenants in there and some of them are, I think daycare quasi homeschoolers. I know other schools have used, some of the homeschoolers use the gym and stuff. So there are occupants in there, but there's significant space for us to start the program and actually grow into the building. So I know that there have already been numerous conversations with city staff. And the architect is working closely with city staff on that. So I think we're, we're in a really good place.
Okay.
The next one is a section 5.2.1 and 5.2.2. It's another duplicative. I think it can be easy, easy enough to strike such as the last one. Section 5.6 for enrollment. I'm just curious about the interpretation of the wording. It states that the student shall remain enrolled. And it's the shall remain that, that is under review or that would ask you to review. Says that the student shall remain enrolled until there is documentation contrary to that fact. I think the concern is if a student doesn't proactively alert the charter school that they're attending elsewhere or that they've dropped out, that the charter school will continue to be funded for the days that the students are enrolled, but not attending. So typically we see in school districts policies that identify after such a some sort of parameter amount of time if a student has yet to attend, that other measures are taken. So whether it's, you know, a truancy issue or whatever it becomes, if they're open enrolled, they're withdrawn and they were, you know, then they're sent back to be the responsibility of the district of residence or however that works. In this case, just kind of leaving it open just seemed an opportunity for discussion. Do you guys plan to have a policy that would define what withdrawing student for non attendance looks like?
I, I think we'd like to mirror whatever the, the traditional school districts in the public sector are using. And I, I understand your point. It's like 30 day enrollment or your 40th day enrollment, whatever that figure is, we would like to mirror that.
Okay. Then contractually, I'll leave it, I'll leave the language up to the attorneys. There are plenty in this meeting to have a better idea than I'll have. But at the end of the day, it would, it would read something like the student would remain enrolled until there is documentation contrary to the fact or per, per a board policy that would require the student be withdrawn from the school or something, some iteration.
Code section on this already in school code. Right?
Well, you're, you're exempt from code, you know, that.
This piece I'm referring to specifically.
I don't believe that the things that you are held accountable for as a charter school. There's not, I don't know of code. I'm not aware.
So I, I think the disciplinary suspension or expulsion might cover this. If your, if your attendance policy sets a policy of you must attend X number of days. Then you will be disciplined. You must attend. If you miss Y number of days, you may be subject to expulsion. So I think there's no need to amend it if the disciplinary policy addresses truancy, non attendance. Incentives to encourage attendance, things along that line, especially since attendance is a target. So I think that the board policy on disciplinary suspension and expulsion would capture that thought.
That would work for me. Then the shall part would be the only language left to review. Because the contract may, I don't know if it would trump then the board policy that would be.
Well, the policy itself would be part of the contract. The policy itself would, because they're required by contract and by statute to have disciplinary policies. It would be incorporated by that reference. So I don't think there's a need to change shall. I think the text is, given their explanation, I think the text is fine as it is.
Well, we're also complicating something, I think, honestly. If you, if you look at this section, 5.6, at least the paper version that I'm looking at, I don't know if it's the same language. The school shall enroll an eligible student who submits a timely application. This is about enrolling the student within the next six weeks. That's what we're talking about here. We're talking about our enrollment open Monday of this week online. We have a few students and families who've already submitted interest applications. We have an enrollment date, or I'm sorry, a lottery date set already for March 31st. If we've exceeded some of our enrollment targets within that, that, these first six weeks. So this shall enroll is, in, in my view, with respect to the here and now, not necessarily fall enrollment dates or, or the, the 40th day enrollment for per pupil funding or anything like that, or even for disciplinary action. This is, this is about getting kids into the system and getting them applied and, and fully integrated within our school information system. So with respect to the shall, I, I'm okay changing that word, but I just want to clarify, I, I think, and you correct me if I'm wrong. That's what this section is really about. It's just about getting kids into the school.
I think that.
Statement is after that.
I think the concern that Dr. Klein had was the last sentence of the last couple of sentences of 5.6 about like dropping a student for non attendance. Dropping a student.
Okay.
When you have, I mean, it could read the student will remain or the student remains enrolled. Shall, shall is the issue.
Yes, the shall is the issue.
Yeah. So you could, this could read once a student has enrolled, the student remains enrolled for the academic year unless these things, you know, they either, they transfer, they reassign, or there's disciplinary action. That be okay if we took the shall out and say remains enrolled? That reads right then.
Be okay with that?
Doing it now.
I'm, I'm really okay either what, if shall is there or, or not.
I think it means the same thing. So I'm fine.
Whether it's in or out.
I see it again. So just another quick talk about in that same section there. I, I think it's just more an, an opportunity for cleanup and consistency. So in that same section, sentence before the charter school shall serve up to 725 students in grades K through 12. The initial charter is for K through seven for the first five years. The long-term goal is K 12, 725.
It looks like they changed the number to 415, but we didn't change the grade.
12, I see. So.
So we need to go K through seven.
That would reflect the.
This is this contract.
Yeah. Okay.
So that 415 is right though.
Yes, is our, our high end. Yes.
Got it. Section 713, school year, school days, hours of operation. I'll give everybody a minute to navigate there. In the version that I reviewed, it did not specify the days and hours of operation, but only reflected back to the original application. As one of the reviewers of the original application, there were a number of questions about those things that then I believe were cleaned up based on future conversations with, with the folks at Horizon. But I think this language to point back to the application that was later clarified makes it kind of muddy to track that back to know exactly what this looks like. So I would recommend referencing something else that's concrete, adding a quick explanation or, or something to clarify what this is referencing.
So what are you, you kind of lost me there. What, what are you recommending as far as a change in contract?
They are exempt from, they are exempt from the the August 23rd law.
Right.
So they can, they could start August 1st.
They could start July 1st.
So I don't know.
So the link, and, and that's fine. I'm okay with having that flexibility. And that's reflected sometime between August 1st and September 15th. It's the sentence that reads the days and hours of operation of the charter school shall be set forth in the application or is otherwise established by the charter school. So because the application reference wasn't there, wasn't clear enough to be something that could be relied upon and for a future conversation. I just thought if you wanted to clarify in there so we knew what it was, that would be helpful.
I, I recall what you're thinking. So in the hours of operation specifically, those were sample daily bell schedules that we have shared across our network of, of charter public schools in different states even. So we have not yet determined the full hours of operation. So I guess it's just a question of, in, in practice, it's a little longer than a typical traditional public school day. It might start 15, 20 minutes earlier, it might end 15, 20 minutes later, something along those lines. Which I think that language is reflected in the application, but we don't have the concrete times yet. So I don't know how you want to put that into this. But I understand your point that it's in the application. It might not be clear in the application.
Could we just strike the reference to the application then, and then just leave the flexibility that it will be established by the charter school?
And these things would be board approved.
Yes, yes. It's just a reference to the application because they were samples and not, not matching for us.
Makes sense.
And so I think just striking that would, is, is my recommendation.
It read the days and hours of operation of the charter school shall be otherwise established by the charter school.
Shall be established.
Shall be.
Cause otherwise it's a reference back to the thing that we're striking.
Yeah.
Shall be.
So this is a point that I would like to raise now. You are, if you are, assuming this contract is signed. Hint, hint. You will be, unless you otherwise seek exemption from governed by the minimum school calendar. So do you anticipate 1,080 hour or 180 day calendar? If not, this is the time to seek that exemption.
We will not seek exemption. Okay.
Thanks.
It's going to be will be, will be established by a charter school.
Okay.
Yeah. Section 95 tuition and fees. The language there, I'll give you a second to navigate. In general, it appears that the charter school is. The charter school will be charging for field trips. Regardless of a student's fee waiver status. Public schools cannot charge for field trips. Field trips part of the curricular day, field trips where students would be counted present in school if they attended are, are not allowed, the costs related to those are not allowed to pass on to students. That would be akin to tuition. So I think it's just a clarity of the intent, the language and a recommendation on, on how that would be addressed then from, from the charter school.
So example, if I'm going to the Science Center of Iowa during the school day. Counter present, it's part of the curriculum. It's part of the, the science and math portion of the, it's part of the school day. The contract as it reads might allow for charges for that. Public schools, traditional public schools could not because that is part of to, the definition of tuition. And so I think that that, using that example is a field trip to the Science Center of Iowa. Since charter schools are subject to the law of tuition and what is and is not tuition. If it's a field trip during the school day or as part of the school curriculum. The intent would be to not charge for that.
I think that's the key, that it's part of the curricular, part of the curriculum.
Or part of the school day. An activity that they would be counted present if they attended. So if they took the field trip to say the school is putting on an optional field trip and the kids can go, but they're not going to be counted present for class. That would be something separate, but if they're getting curricular credit for it and it's part of the school day. If they would be otherwise identified as not being able to afford if they couldn't go.
So we would propose that they strike and may separately charge reasonable fees for the field trips at or around the time of such field trips.
Well, and it's in the, and any required student activities.
Required is the issue there. Because if we're talking extracurricular choice activities that are not part of the expected curriculum, then there could be potential extra charges.
Is the charter school exempt from providing a student activity program? School districts are required to, statutorily required to provide a student activity program, extracurricular, co-curricular. And they are not allowed to charge for that as it, as it would be akin to charging tuition because they're required to charge it. So I defer to Thomas. You have the authority to charge for that.
They're exempt from everything, but the list of things that they're not exempt from, and I don't believe that's on the list.
So I think that this is one thing where allows some latitude to see and gather data, like how many children were excluded from activities because of inability to pay that otherwise wouldn't, let's, the field trip is the non, is for me a non-negotiable thing because it's part of the curricular day. Activities.
Yes.
I think we need to figure out if the statute that requires school districts require or provide an activity program. If it applies to charter schools, I think that's the question. If it applies to charter schools.
Doesn't the second sentence in this section address that though? That the charter school may, to the extent permitted by law.
Yeah, let's do that in case by case. The, the obvious thing is field trips during the school day are not. So like strike that clear thing where charging for field trips that are either where students are marked present for the day or part of the curriculum. Striking that, but leaving activities and we could sort of, we can, we can work through, we can work through that with the charter.
So I'm back to and may separately charge reasonable fees for field trips at or around the time of such field trips. We're good with striking that.
Yeah, I, I agree. So if, if it is truly part of the curriculum on Tuesday, all second graders are going to the museum because it's directly related to the curricular, whatever's happening in the classroom. The school shall not charge fees for that trip.
Good.
Unless there are any other comments, I think we move on. My issues have been addressed. If other folks have additional issues, and then we'll turn it over to whatever comments or suggestions board members have.
Okay, so.
Do you have any?
I'm assuming.
I do have one more.
One more.
Who is taking notes on all this stuff? I'm assuming some.
Janet Boyd is editing in real time.
I'm editing, I'm editing. If I knew how, I'd share my screen, but I don't know how.
You had one more.
The last question I have again. The last question I have, again, this is just, people smarter than me can tell me that, what this means. Section eleven-two, the management contract, just asking a question, if we're okay if the language reads that they shall enter into a contract with the management organization. It seems that we would be agreeing to restricting the governing board. Want to ensure that the governing board retains their authority over to the charter school and has choice of whether to enter into the contract with the management organization. Sorry, that's the end of my comment.
And I would defer to the founding group and the administrator here about whether or not shall or may is acceptable.
May.
May?
So which line is that?
Eleven-two.
Eleven-two.
It's this line right here, near the end.
I'd have to go with present.
So right here. We're changing that to may.
Section eleven-two.
So it's eleven-two, yep. So it would just read then, manage and operate the school, then the charter school may, no later than a hundred and twenty days prior to the opening date, enter into a legally binding and enforceable agreement. Thank you. Thank you, those are my comments.
Two square is right here online.
And I know that certain state board members had identified some clauses that might be, needed to be filled in. I know some of those have been taken care of already. We've stricken some language that is duplicative, but state board members, this is your contract also. Do you have any questions, comments, or clauses that you want to hear either state department staff responses to or successful applicant responses to?
Yeah, I'd like to go to six point four. That's dealing with the administrators, the chief administrator. And specifically, six point four point two. Are we saying in that that the administrator doesn't have to be certified as an administrator?
Yes, and that tracks with the statute.
So with the charter school, you don't have to have a certified administrator?
It's one of those three options under the statute, either somebody who has a charter school administrator authorization, an administrator license, or a teaching license.
Oh, so that's part of the statute.
Correct.
BOE has a special licensure for director, correct? If I'm wrong, Thomas.
Correct.
So that's just one option.
One of the three options. So the, again, those align with this, that's a public policy choice that's been made by the General Assembly and Governor Reynolds.
Well, if that's part of the deal, it's part of the deal. I have a hard time with that, but that's beside the point. I'd like to look at seven point two point one.
All right.
And, and this is with the, with the, specifically with the subgroups of populations. I know for some of the smaller schools in the state, they don't, it used to be, have a minimum of ten people in a subgroup in order to report out on that. Is that still the case, or? Talk to me.
That's mission ten, right?
That's still the case, yes. When we do reports, we don't, we always asterisk that out, that data out. So and if I reported on this charter and they had five students that were Hispanic, when you got that chart as a state board, that would be an asterisk because we don't report that.
So the. Yeah, the successful applicant will report raw numbers, and even if the N size is lower than the reporting threshold, if it's an area or an area of emphasis that's of concern, the department would interact with the charter school, maybe bring the concern, if not the data, to the board as part of a report, but we would redact the low N size groups that, still paying attention to them, but redacting publicly their data.
Okay, so that's going to be handled internally then? If there's any redacted data?
Yes, yes.
Okay, then the last one that I had was seven point five and seven point nine. And the copy that I had, they were, they were duplicate. With graduation requirements, they're, said the exact same thing.
So to avoid the need to renumber, how about just reserving seven, striking and reserving seven point nine in case there's like cascading internal cross-references? Just strike and reserve seven point nine?
Yeah, I don't care how you do that, just.
Intentionally left blank or something, yeah.
If there are any internal cross-references.
Okay.
All right, then just strike and renumber, because Cassandra, Cassandra noted that there would not be any internal cross-references to anything following seven point nine. Right.
Yeah, I just remembered it when I struck it. So English language learners goes to seven point nine.
Okay, that's all I had. Other members? Yes.
John, on page twenty of twenty-seven of my version, it says Article eleven, insurance and legal liabilities. I think it's really Article ten in the caption. That's number one. Number two, are these insurance requirements standard state of Iowa things that are required, or is this negotiated?
The entity is required to carry insurance, but the limits themselves are not specified in education statute.
So who, does some, does somebody who's an expert in liability insurance or et cetera for the state provide this to us, or how, where do these numbers come from?
It came from the charter school.
Yeah, it's part of our comprehensive services. Our H R, H R financial team partnered with Hub International and then provides coverage for all of our schools across the network. And so while I personally can speak to these numbers specifically, I'd be happy to put folks in touch with those that know these numbers more.
And direct, Mr. Kane, as somebody who's read a fair share of government contracts over the last three years, these coverage limits and coverage requirements are broadly consistent with contracts that the department enters into with subrecipients.
Okay, that, that's what I'm trying to get at. So there is a standard, standardization here that's being followed.
So both within the, the charters that concept manages, as well as horizontally across other contracts with the department?
I think in ten point three, I had a question about the, it refers to the school. I think that's a new term in ten point three, ten point four, and ten point five. We probably mean charter school, but from the definitions in one point one. But identifying a pending or threatened claim or charge to school within twenty-four hours of it occurring, I, what, what does that mean exactly? I mean, if somebody fell on the sidewalk, I'm staring at a major snowstorm right now out my window. Somebody falls right now. Do I have to, does charter school have to notify the state within twenty-four hours of right now, or a year from now when I get sued, they get sued? I wasn't sure that, because twenty-four hours is pretty fast. I mean, I don't have a problem with it, I just had a question about it. And when does it start, I guess? Do we need to get the concept of known in here that we knew or reasonably should have known about it?
Yes, thank you.
And then the last, oh, that, that's, that's it for me, I guess.
So that'd be, this ten point three, this within twenty-four hours of informing the school, showing form of the state board, that's not for a public school to have to notify the state board?
Well, the state board, public schools don't contract with the state board. And so the, the twenty-four hours of the state board, I think that might be notify the department or notify.
Okay, so it wouldn't be the state board, it's the designee?
Because I, state board meets eight, nine times a year.
Right.
But notify the department, which will notify the state board, notify the department, which I think that that would make more sense than if you identify a risk within twenty-four hours, finding somebody who might be out of state on a vacation in Florida, for example. So that would be just my, my suggestion as far as risk management, notifying the department versus notifying the state board. And then the department can work with the state board and the successful applicant to sort of manage, to manage that flow of information.
I would agree with that change as far as notifying the department. And then I like Brian's suggestion as far as when it's known.
The department already named as a party in this. Or can we just identify it as the state board's designee, which in this case would be?
We don't, we don't have to be named as a party if we're, like, we don't have to be separately named as a party to be named as.
As a contact, right.
So to that same point, do we even have to recognize the department as the one that would connect? Because it is implied, or might vary?
Well, naming an entity as somebody who you notify fulfills your duty to notify if it's left blank or department's, state board's designee, that could change over time. If with such a short timeline, it probably ought to be a specified entity versus to be determined. So that's why, just as a matter of information management.
I don't mean to be determined, I mean just leaving it as state board. Because in that sense, then, it could be the state board, or it could be the Department of Education. Do we want to specify it as the Department of Ed? And if so, then which department? Which, let's, let's, let's really be specific then, if you'd prefer.
Or how about the state board liaison at the Department of Education, or something? That way it's specific to your point, state board designee?
Yes, state board designee, so the state board can designate through its own processes who it wants to manage this portion of the contract.
So let's practically play this out. You know, we show up on the news for something untoward, whom I call it? Janet?
Janet.
Okay, all right, just want to be practically.
Why don't we just say Director, Department of Education? That.
In, in practice, yeah. I mean, I defer to how, how, how specific we need to be on this. I mean, I'm, I'm sort of leaning a little bit to it's inferred by state and the state board. I understand the interest in having to designate, but you know, if Janet's out, if I'm out, you know, we're getting down in the weeds, there's just notification needs to be, needs to happen. I think we could work that out on the backside, but again, I defer to the attorneys on how specific, but would be comfortable if the board is comfortable leaving it a state board with the, with the intention that it just means they're going to contact somebody at the department because they're not going to notify you directly.
I appreciate that, and I really, and I also do appreciate the other members' comment about the knowing and the reasonable know, knowedness, if that's a word, of the, it's the, work on that language a bit.
It is a word, I make up words all the time. It is, it's a word if you say it is.
Appreciate that.
So within twenty-four hours of any identification of, where would the, where would you suggest that the know or should have known language, or known or reasonably should have known language fits into that sentence?
Within twenty-four hours of a, of knowing or reasonably should have knowing of any pending or threat, threatened claims.
Yeah, strange.
Identification's out.
Yeah.
And so this is real, the question of who to notify on a short timeline, this is really a management of risk, of managing of risk. And so what tolerance does the state board and the successful applicant, what tolerance do the two parties have in maybe a little ambiguity of who gets noticed? It, it could be the state board, it could be inferred that that also includes the department because the department has a close relationship with the board, but the department's not the board. So I would defer to the two parties to this contract about what specificity you require, what, and what latitude should be in this clause to appropriately manage this, this short turnaround of information exchange.
Well, I, I think it ought to be a specific office, and I, I'd still go back to the Director of the Department of Education. I mean, if Ann's not there, that doesn't mean, this is going to be a written notice delivered to that office. If I'm Horizon, I want to know specifically who I'm supposed to tell, so I'm not in breach for sending it to John, and then John's been off the board for three years. Or whatever.
Janet, what's your job title exactly?
I am a school improvement consultant.
Oh, and it doesn't have charter right next to you? Okay.
Or the school improvement.
That would be fine, too, if it's, if Janet has a title that, that position is going to, I just don't want it to be people.
Right, and, right, I agree. And for all the charters, Janet is our school improvement consultant that has that primary role, and we all are sort of ancillary to that point of contact, that might be cleaner.
The school improvement consultant primarily responsible for charter schools.
So if you want to say.
So, so the spirit of this is, when we work with larger school systems, whether it's State Board of Education in Illinois, for instance, there's, there's a charter office, there's somebody, to your point, there's, there's a director of charter schools or school improvement that oversees charters. And so we, we don't have that direct contact. Or with Chicago Public Schools, for instance, there's another department or an office of innovation and incubation oversees charter schools. So it's cleaner in that sense. There's not a person named, but it is just that particular location. And so whether Department of Education, I think, makes sense. And then I think just going forward, we, we just have to have, we'll be having ongoing communication. So clearly, we'll know who to contact, and that can change on a month-to-month basis or a six-week basis or on a semester term. So we're okay with that level of ambiguity, so long as we just kind of, Department of Ed is where we need to contact. And then anecdotally, who?
And Brian, I'm not opposed to, if, if you're more comfortable saying the director, because we'll just get the information to them. It's just that position is sort of the office, as you say, managing charters.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with, I just want a specific place for Horizon to send the required notice. It ought to be clear where they send it. And if it's you, I mean, if it's your position, or if it's a different position at DOE, I, I would prefer that to the state board.
I would concur with that. They're happy with the Department of Ed or the Director of the Department of Ed.
So Janet, why don't you read what you've typed, just so?
We were looking at the first, we were looking at the first sentence under ten point three, within twenty-four hours of knowing or reasonably knowing of any pending or threatened claim or charges, the school will inform, we wanted to put charter, thus charter school. Will inform the, right now I have state board's designee, but this is the, that's the position that we want to look at, putting another, either the Director of the Department of Education, the school improvement consultant, the charge of charter schools.
Is it, is it simplest just to say the Director of the Department of Education? And then, and then procedurally, you just, you copy her, but send it to her, something like that? What's the simplest in the language, I think is what?
Simplest would be Director.
Okay.
And given the language here, it might wind up in the Director's office anyway, based on just sort of the nature of this section. It's going to be high visibility, it's going to, it's going to wind up with the Director anyway.
I, I think the beginning language is within 24 hours of knowing, comma, or reasonably should have known, comma, of any, that, I think that's what we're saying. As opposed to knowing or reasonably knowing, you know? It's should have known.
Basically should have known, okay.
Right.
Within 24 hours of knowing or reasonably should have known of any pending or threatened claim or charges, the charter school will inform the Director of the Iowa Department of Education with all notices of claims, period. In addition to satisfy its indemnification, I said the right obligations, the school will cooperate fully with the state board, so it says state board again. Which is correct.
The rest of the sentence is correct.
That's correct.
So wherever it says school.
School should be charter school, I think, not school.
I, I just changed that, and then without another.
10 seems like a drop-in, and you use a different definition. School isn't defined in 1.1.
It's not in 10.5 either.
Right, it's not anywhere in 10.
So anywhere in 10 where it says school, would you like for me to put in charter school?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, there's school throughout the whole agreement, so maybe, maybe you go back in, under 1.1, or where we're there, talking about definitions is.
Well, it has school or charter school in 1.1.
Parties, in parties.
I think it's charters. If I missed it, I apologize, but mine, 1.1, the 1, 2, 3, 4, one down, says charter school means a school.
So in parties, page one, above the recitals?
He's looking at the.
Page one.
Yeah, it's a school. Out of under charter school as in, also means.
In the definitions in Article 1.
So school or the charter school in the parties, everybody will, even though it's not in the definitions, even, even though school is not in the definitions, because charter school is defined, I think, just reading the parties, if school and charter school are used as synonyms, synonymous terms, charter school is defined. I don't know if it's, it's permissible to use school and charter school wherever the context would require throughout the agreement. So defer to the state board about whether or not to add charter school wherever school appears in Article 10. But since school and charter school are synonymous terms, identification of parties, it's not necess, I don't believe it's necessary.
To keep it simple, I'll withdraw that. I, I'm, I'm starting to give, I'm starting to give myself a headache, so.
Well, but the point is, is that in, in this section, we're specifying as the charter school, but there's lots of other references to the school throughout the entire contract. And so if I'm reading this, it's like, okay, this is the school, and now we're specifying charter school. To me, either specify it throughout, or you just, I don't know.
Okay. Take, take, take charter out of there, just refer to school.
That would be our preference, to just take charter out of, leave it in the, remove charter as the definer of the school through the rest of the body. You okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, and Brian, it also mentioned that the articles are misnumbered as well. Throughout.
Got that.
Okay, so like article.
So Janet's already made those corrections.
I think I caught all that, I got that all wrapped up.
They got all of them, okay, thank you. Brian, did you have anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
Other board members?
And just quickly, John, maybe this is what we were just referencing, but shouldn't everything under Article 2 start with the number 2? I don't write contracts. And it goes all the way through the contract.
Yeah, that's what I was referencing to.
Okay, so it starts with Article 2, and it goes all the way through. So everything, all the article numbers are wrong, from Article 2 down.
Well.
If you have an Article 1, and a 1.1, then you have an Article 2 and a 1.1.
Okay. I've got, I think I caught all the, Article 1 is definitions, that's correct. Article 2, I've got corrected, purpose, vision, and mission, but then it's, it's, I see the numbers are wrong, it should be 2.
Right.
Those are 1s.
Everything should be 2.
Okay, yep, I got it.
And it goes through.
3.1 is Article 4, yeah, I mean, just, just clean that up.
Its numbers are not right.
All the numbers.
Flashbacks to my dissertation again.
That's all I had, John.
So you got a lot of renumbering to do, Janet.
I think in the interest of moving this along, we will trust Janet and her team to renumber for the final document.
That, yeah, I don't think we need to go through each one. Other, other board members?
I have a question about 5.3, that says that charter school is exempt from ordinary laws that apply to traditional public schools, and then it lists a bunch of exemptions, which seems to be a lot of things that they're not actually exempted from. So I'm curious about what laws and regulations the charter school is exempt from. And I only ask because in 12.3.4, that provision allows the board to revoke, terminate, or decline to renew the contract if the charter school violates a provision of law from which it's not exempted. So I'm just curious if there's any guidance as to, you know, any more specificity? Or, you know, if that's just an overbroad question, you know, we can talk about that in some other form.
I'll give a couple of concrete examples that schools seem to struggle with. School districts seem to struggle with the August 23rd start date. The charter school would be exempt, they could start whenever, they could start July 1. That's a law from which they would be exempt. The requirement, this came up earlier, a, a, a student who has been expelled from District X could not seek open enrollment in District Y. A student who is expelled from District X could permissibly enroll in charter school, why? Because that limitation on re-enrollment applies only to school districts. It wouldn't apply to charter schools. So those are two concrete examples. As a charter school, as the successful applicant in the two existing charters under the current laws, as they run up against something, we were just sort of case by casing it. But those are two concrete examples that have crossed my desk in the last couple of weeks, where a public school district would have those restrictions under statute, a charter school would not.
I think the concern, Thomas, in, in reading that is, it says the charter school is exempt from all state statutes. That's, that's pretty broad, they're not applicable to any law?
And again, this is going back to the, the comment about who may be a charter school administrator. The language at the top of what is currently 5.3 is a correct statement of the law. That they are exempt from anything unless otherwise specified, any school law unless otherwise specified. There might be laws outside of school law that they would, that charter school would, that the charter school statute would have no business touching, like nonprofit corporations, premises liability, those aren't school law issues, the charter would, the charter would still be subject to those. But within Code Chapter 256 and going forward, they're, they're exempt from anything unless otherwise specified, and that's a term of the statute.
That's, it's, yeah. I think some of the things you're picking up on are not specific to this contract, they're from the controlling statute. So it might be the first time some of you have seen some of that, but that's where it's coming from, correct?
Does that answer your question?
Yes, that answers, when I, when I read the sentence more fully after listening to Thomas, yes, that answers my question. Thank you, Thomas.
Other board members?
John, I had one, just one real quick question, 5.5. At the end of it, it says as provided in the proposal, proposals capitalized. Can we just delete that phrase? I mean, I think it was application or something somewhere else, but it just does age, grade, range, the school shall provide instruction to pupils in grades K through 7, period.
Do we want to match that to the other change that you, that just references K7?
So in the PDF, it already says K7? The paper here says K12, so.
Mine says 7.
Done.
They don't think I need the as provided in the.
This is the language that he's questioning, as provided in.
Happy I've got. After 7.
Well, I've agreed, the school shall provide instruction to pupils in grades K through 7, period. That what you'd like to see?
Yeah.
And again, just to be clear, we're, we're understanding that this is part of the initial charter term. We don't intend to serve students K7 next fall, it's, we're growing up to that, so within five years, we'll be that K7 group, which then gets into further conversation.
And then the next contract, you know, your next contract, if you just want to go up to high school, that would be, you know, this five years.
Well, we've already been approved, K12.
Yeah, yeah, but the next contract.
The next contract, yeah, like that enrollment.
I'm just doing, would you entertain changing from shall to may? So that gets a, an expectation that they shall provide K7 starting July 1? Instead, it's they may provide the K7?
But that, that's fine, because one of, one of our procedural questions down the road might reflect material modification when it comes to enrollment, like for whatever reason, we get slammed with third graders this year, maybe we need to have more sections of fourth or something, and that, that might kind of alter that a little bit, but that wouldn't happen without more discussion here, so it may make sense.
I think the language now, where it says you shall provide K through 7, is that next year? And, and just.
That's a, that's a good point, if a seventh grader wants to enroll and you don't have a seventh grade section because you haven't scaled up.
This implies we have to.
Yes.
Yeah. So great, giving them the flexibility that they intend to have, I would say.
Like as we scale from early elementary up to middle grades, that, I think that that's a prudent suggestion, so you don't get caught having a discussion with a parent about a section that doesn't exist.
So it's now the school may provide instruction to pupils in grades K through 7.
Sounds good to me.
So I believe all of the comments that I had, and staff have, board have raised, have been addressed. And I think just in the interest of moving this along, a motion that I might propose somebody make is that the state board approve, and then the president sign the Horizon Science Academy Des Moines Charter School contract, subject to additions and corrections made during this meeting by Ms. Boyd. So that would incorporate all of the agreed-upon changes that we've made so far through the meeting. We wouldn't need to, the meeting is being recorded, minutes are being kept. So if there's a question about whether or not a change is in there, we can always go back to the, go back to the source. But I think for moving things along, that would be a motion that I think would be something that the state board should, could consider.
Carol, have you recorded that suggested motion?
I have.
Thank you.
How about so moved?
Brian has made a motion to approve the suggested motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nathan, so any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Hearing no opposition, it is approved. I think that's the end of our, of our meeting.
And Mr. President, just like to make a comment before adjournment. This went longer than anticipated, but I hope everybody, both, on both sides of the contract, both parties to the contract appreciated the opportunity to work through these concerns in real time rather than after the fact, questioning what was meant by. So thanks for, thanks for your indulgence in going a little bit over, and by a little bit, I mean a lot, over the scheduled time. But the product is much better for your efforts.
Thank you for all of your.
Over agenda item times in the past, so we. All right, any other business before the board? Hearing now, I'll call for adjournment.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.